I'd like to welcome everybody out to our commission meeting on this October 5th, 2016. If everybody would please rise and make the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we have a couple sets of minutes on our first agenda item. We'll take them separately. First, we have the August 17th, 2016 commission meeting. Do you have any changes in that? I'd go ahead and make a motion and we could approve those.
I didn't see any changes. I'll second the motion.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. The next set of minutes that we have is the August 3rd, 2016.
I didn't see anything that needed adjustment there. Did you, Commissioner?
No.
I'll make a motion that we accept those minutes.
And I'll go ahead and second that. You have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And I believe the last set of minutes we have is the September 7th commission meeting minutes. I saw some changes in most.
I did not have any, so I would go ahead and make a motion to approve those also.
And I'll second the motion.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number two on the agenda, Employee of the Month. On here it says Rose Barnes, but Rose Barnes had a little bit of an accident and she's recovering, so we'll turn that over to Barry, fortunately, for Employee of the Month. For the presentation or...
Well, I definitely don't do this as good as Rose, so I don't have to air with us, but Steve was actually nominated for Employee of the Month for this month. We always joke around that Steve is our McGyver in the department. He usually fixes our problem with the $5 Amazon cart. He's definitely been an asset. He has helped us do what government needs to do. We do more with less, and so that's a key position in that, so we're grateful for all he does.
Steve, I'm glad that you can fix those little things that seems like we always need with technology. It helps us, so I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, Steve. Was Ben Clement going to say something as well? I heard that...
I'll just read something real quick. Since Jordan worked for my department, he's the one that made the nomination, and so I texted him earlier to find out what the reason was. He says, "I nominated him because he's always happy and willing to help out as soon as you ask him if he's available. If not, he gets on it right away." He's super resourceful and goes out of what I would think his job description is, and of course, we have to accept the people that are here and also the others in the IT department for this last one. He says, "And let's just say his personality for an IT person is atypical." You may interpret that as you wish. Good job.
Thank you.
Item number three, review of personal property tax appeal for AFAB. Is he here today?
Haven't seen him.
We haven't received any more information from what I understand.
Do we have... Just looking to see if we have Julie or... Julie? Thanks for filling in. I know we asked for some specific things to be... to take place with this. Maybe you could bring us up to date. Is there any other information we can...
Actually, we have not received any information since the last commission meeting. We did go out with the property and we wanted to make sure that the items were still located there, and places seizure notice is protected, but we can't remove the property unless the taxes were paid. Mr. Kingston had made contact with our office and told Kristen we agreed to give until the end of the year to pay 14 and 15, and then 16 is supposed to be discussed tonight.
There was no... So we have not received... So we made that audit to him. He has not denied it, or he hasn't accepted it or rejected it. Just haven't heard anything from him at all. So based on other things too that Julie saw at the inspection site, we have some doubts as to whether, when she went and inspected the property, it looks like there's other property that may be unreported. So in light of the fact that Mr. Kingston is not working with us as we requested, I've spoken with Julie, and I think it's her request that the appeal be denied at this point for 2016 as well.
And I would make that motion. We did put the deadline on to be back here today to take care of that, so I'd make a motion that we deny the 2016 appeal.
You know, with the understanding that there's a lot of perhaps unreported property there as well, I think it makes no sense to deny. So I'll second the motion.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number four on the agenda, presentation and update on the SR-10 US-6 to Ridgell Project Blockberry Engineering. I hope I said that right.
Yeah, it's all good.
Well, I'm Troy Horace of the UDOT project manager out of Richfield.
And I'm H. T. Azar, I'm a blockberry engineer, and we've been hired by UDOT to do the designing for this project.
Just wanted to give you an update from the last time we met. We met in May, we met again. As soon as this comes up, we'll go through the slide presentation.
There's a hard copy of the presentation that we provided to you too, so...
It's kind of an overview. Last time we met, we were moving forward, we had planned to have a public open house in June, and then there was some concerns about the project being larger and larger, so we went back to our region leadership, worked with them, and basically what's happened is about two months behind, is very defined what the project really is. So the overview is to improve the safety and... And next slide we can... Improve the safety by turn lanes and shoulders on this project. Working with leadership, we were able to come up with this. We're going to have six-foot shoulders. At one time we talked about having 10-foot shoulders in previous, but we'll show you here in a few minutes what it's like. Provide sidewalk. We talked to county about that. They'd like to have sidewalk there. At one time it was just one side of the road. Now we took it back with signals, but on both sides of the road, so we stop off on both sides of the road. And at Robertson Lane, we'll include the side distance, which is that it's been known to have problems there with side distance there. We will add drainage to it. We'll take care of the drainage, especially like unnamed wash. Currently, there's like two six-foot diameter culverts that are there, and recently, like two weeks ago, you had a big storm and it's all the water, had a hard time getting through. Locker went and reviewed that and determined that it was undersized, and so those will be removed and a large box cover will be placed instead that will handle the blows for every year storm through there. Turn to the next slide. Hard to see, but on the right-hand side is the north Fairgrounds Road. Just kind of shows where the project limits are. We're starting at 1150 south and going down to 3200 south. The 3200 south on the left side of the page there, where you cross the canal and still pass intersection down there, and that's where the project will land. We will include a couple of turn lanes, a couple of occasions, and that first one down there at 3000 south will be a turn lane. Currently, at Robertson Lane, there's a turn lane. Next slide. So this is a typical section that we have got approval to go forward with. As you can see, the center is a two-by-one turn lane, and that's going to be 14 feet. Traffic lanes are 12 feet, six-foot shoulders, two-and-a-half foot curving down here, and then the sidewalk is six feet on each side. From the backside of sidewalk to the right of way is seven feet. The reason why it's so large is we have to accommodate the power, and there's power poles on both sides of the road, so at this point right now, power poles will go on the backside of sidewalk, and that's why you need seven feet is to be able to take their matched arms for the power and keep within the right of way. Currently, they have set some preliminary plans. Our company is working on the design. We're hoping to try to avoid any guy wires that go beyond this eight-one-foot section, but right now we're not sure. We have an option of either purchasing or getting even for guy wires for the poles or doing self-supporting poles, and so we'll work through that, we'll do better define. There are over 75 properties that are impacted by this project right here. So this is called the CMGC Process Construction Manager, become a contractor. We have hired Kibbutz, a contractor, they're on board and try to help us go through this project to help us to talk about construction of it, estimating. We do separate estimates. They put the estimate together. Locker puts the estimate together. We look at those to see if we're in the ballpark or not. So like you see here, to help with constructability and building information modeling. And we mentioned to you before, this is a 3D project. We're trying to design this in 3D. Actually, we're calling it now IDC, and so that's Intelligent Designing Construction. So it's more than just 3D. We're looking at using machine control with the contractors. So it's the first one in our region to this extent we're doing it right now, where that document, electronic document, becomes the actual legal document. So we're looking at the earliest construction will begin next year, this time. That's at the earliest, but more than likely it'll probably happen in the spring of 2018 because we have to extend the culverts until we'll see if the waterways, when there's a lot of water in the canals and so on. Traffic control. Really work with the businesses and homeowners, consult product construction. We'll have, you know, multiple meetings. Access to driveway will be maintained. We'll work with the trucking association, and again, work with businesses and so on, so we try to minimize the impact people on that route. As I mentioned earlier, inheritors may potentially impact property. Yes, there will be. There are 75 properties that we go through. We're in the process right now of getting right-of-way agents on board. In fact, we select those next Wednesday, and so they should process to go through and look at how much damage are done to properties and so on. There are historic properties there. Shows here there are nine, so there... And with those guys on board, we'll start the right-of-way meetings probably in the next month or so, but soon. The next slide is... So we'll have that public open house with the label. We'll have it either later this month or early November. Last time we had the fairgrounds? We'll have a large enough location that people will come there. We'll have a scroll plot of the flag showing the right-of-way limits, the properties, give everybody opportunity to make comments on it. The final design between now and the spring of 2017, the right-of-way can go clear up until June, purchasing right-of-way that's needed, and then possibly beginning construction in fall of 2017. So the last one here is just to contact. Here's the project hotline phone number. There's an email you can email to it. There's a website that has information. They're keeping that website updated on the progress of the project. So any questions, there's multiple ways to get ahold of us. Any questions for us?
There was a proposal brought to me about moving the Robertson turn lane up onto the top of the hill there. Whatever happened with that?
Last time was about three weeks ago. I got ahold of Curtis, and we tried to arrange a meeting, and the day that he arranged it, I couldn't make it there, so we're still waiting on the county to arrange a meeting for us to show up and talk about that. What we could do with the project though is we could open up the roadway there as an opening. That's about the extent that we would do, you know? The other question is, would that then become the new Robertson Lane? Would Robertson Lane be closed down? So there's still some issues that need to be resolved. The sooner the better because we have an assigned process right now.
Well, I'm not an engineer, but there was the discussions that I have with individuals says that it might be a safer place for Robertson Lane just because it has better side distance in both directions, and you're not looking at the hill.
Right.
So I guess we'll have that meeting here quickly.
Right, so we need to give a meeting there to look at what we will participate as part of the project, or what the county or developers responsible to do. I know there were two locations that were talked about. If you look on the east side of the roadway, there was a road that came up to it, but now there's a bunch of gas, so they actually curved the road and brought it further south, and I'm not sure exactly which location they're talking about, but where it needs to be located right across the street from the other access. We can't have offset accesses.
Right.
But the sooner we have that meeting, we can determine if we're going to do that or not. Designer needs to know to incorporate because right now he has on it, I'm going to be paying.
I just had a comment. You mentioned about the side distance, make you put the road up there. That would help with that. We are flattening the curve, the vertical curve on both sides of that to help improve the side distance, so if we're not going forward with Robertson Lane, that will be improved to meet standards.
So that's all I had.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Item number five on the agenda, consideration and approvals of amendment number three to the Department of Health Services contract for funding the Utah Transition Age Youth Power to Succeed with Four Corners Community Behavioral Health. Karen Dolan.
Aye.
That's a mouthful.
That is a mouthful. So this is acquired here federal grant, we're in year three. It's aimed at young people ages 15 to 25 who are just starting to have mental health problems. It's early intervention, early treatment, engaging them so we don't make tons of crisis to get them some help, and services for youth this age in all three counties. And so I'm here for signature.
How's it been going the last couple of years, Karen?
Really good. We've served about 80 young people a year in the last three years. That's our goal. Many young people with early psychosis, so they're just beginning to develop schizophrenia or bipolar illness. Helping them get on meds, get treatment, just the help they need. It changes the trajectory of their illness, so it's not as severe over the course of their lifetime, so it's a really successful grant.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
You have a motion in second? Did you want...
No, I was just going to comment that the Utah YES program has been, how'd you say, presented and explained in some of our annual meetings and different meetings that we've had for the Four Corners Board, and it's been impressive to see some of its results.
Well, we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I'll get assigned a copy back to us that part of the 814.
I mean, actually, can I get a copy? Or should I kind of get one? I think they need two copies.
She could just send one to us.
Karen, you can just send this one. After that fully executed, I'll send it to my office. Dan Taylor. If you'll come to the mic and state your name, and we'll have this conversation.
This is why I'm going to help you go through visualizing. Well, as you said, Dan Taylor, and I'm representing the homeowners of the South Meadows subdivision, Southwest Pride. Several members of the subdivision have come today also. Just a little bit of background, during the last two weeks during this real high precipitation period, we've experienced three major flood events since effect of 12 homes in the subdivision. Two floods occurred on September 28th, and then another large one on October 2nd. Each one of these three has caused extensive damage to homes, yards, property, et cetera. Right now, each rainstorm caused runoff in areas west of the subdivision. You can probably see that map a little bit. They're actually extending westward from Carbon Canal, which is not on that map, but it drains an area of the oil, the gas fields probably two to three square miles that comes up to Carbon Canal. And it caused the water flow over Carbon Canal in eight to 10 different places, and almost collected down into the area that you can see outlined there on the Google Apps images. So we're really asking the county to help us with at least two things right now. First, that you request the county engineer, Curtis, maybe to do a flood assessment of that area and develop a plan for corrective action. And secondly, ask the plant flood mitigation be implemented as quickly as possible, not immediately. Remember, each rainstorm is causing flooding right now. I don't know how much of it is due to possible change in the drainage patterns out to the west, if that's involved at all, or if it's just soil saturation that's causing excessive flooding. But we really can't, we can't go and deliver action. I mean, every rainstorm we're getting floods right now. And we understand that there's currently other priority projects being addressed by the county, but if you'd please make this very high priority as well, none is going to be afforded financial loss that we've already incurred, plus of course, the emotional turmoil that's caused every time you hear a thunderclap. You just don't know if it's happening again. So if we could move forward with an implementation plan and maybe get something going soon, that would really help us out. And if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or if it's something that I can't answer, maybe someone else.
Maybe just a bit of information. I've already been in contact with Curtis about this specific area and also about Westwood. We're looking at what drainages come into those areas and what potential fixes there are. Some of those fixes may be some retention basins that don't store the water, collect it, and pass it through at a slower rate. We'd have to find proper places to do that. You have to have an area big enough to impound a fairly large amount of water, or at least slow it down long enough that it doesn't come through all at once. They've done a project like that out of Wellington, and I don't know if that was Wellington. I believe it was Wellington that did that project, but something similar to that for both this problem and or Westwood. We're putting out our damage survey reports with FEMA and the NRCS, trying to get some more funding. In the last funding round with that, the county was not funded in any of our projects. However, because the flooding was so severe again from 2014 to today, we've been told to get those reports back in, and they will come down and do another assessment, and because there's the governor and Congressman Chaffetz, that there's a potential of having some more funding coming. So hopefully, the county will get funded as well as some of these other city projects. I don't know, it's not a guarantee that we'll get any of that funding, but if we can, it would be... These are things I'm very grateful that you bring, and we're aware of them. We're trying to get them in that DSR so they can be, so we can find some federal money to go after those. If not, we'll certainly try and find some county fixes to help.
Great, and I know there's, you know, catch bases and long-term goals, long-term solutions, of course, the goal, but even some kind of short-term mitigation, increasing culvert sizes in a couple of these areas, providing an open drainage through two spots and some small berms, you know, that could be done probably in a matter of, well, realistically, probably 30 to 40 man-hours at least, maybe more, but something to help until the time that we can do a long-term future damage control. I would be really grateful for that.
Karen, I had just a couple of questions too. Two years ago, when we had, again, it was more of a flash flood situation, not as widespread, but did you get water then? I just don't remember.
I did not. Did you get water in time?
We did every time.
Okay, I guess, I'm a little slightly different portion. There's very localized, tight and low spots, but at the lowest spot, I didn't get it every time. In fact, there were four flooding bands where we only had three major ones, but there was a fourth one on...
On the dock.
The culverts almost handled, but not quite.
So is your home the one with the half-round driveway?
Dan can show you. We have a half of it that's off arms, but it's only inch, which is...
Here's the...
Okay.
This one on this one. That's one for me. There's a culvert right here. It's increasing the culvert size. There's a hole through here, and you stand it all the way to the wash.
There's another culvert here, correct?
There's another culvert right here, and that's the level from this area coming through. This culvert too, eight inches, has certain metal scale and drainage, drainage inside our backyard. So that was almost a case of white and flood, splitting back there and all the other parts. So if that's the case, there's also one at the front. Those are three design reasons, but it's not, so the culvert is actually out in one of the homes, and so that's part of the problem.
And just part of that follow-up question was also to make sure that everybody did have the damage that it is in our reporting system that you called in. If not, still do call into the 472 hotline number. We do need to log and register all these things because that just increases our ability. Commissioner Hope's has spent a great deal of time with the road shop and with the NRCS and others in the state, trying to find a way around this. The only other question, and you answered partially with the discussion with what you were talking with Commissioner Hope's about, was the existing drainage plan. It sounds like there was some that was done originally, probably when the subdivision was put in, but it may not have met the standard at that point, or certainly doesn't now, so...
It was not complete. The drainage wasn't carried out to the wash, and the culverts are higher than some of the properties, and so the property backs up maybe two feet before you even start to get down in culvert, which itself, a lot of these things, as major as it seems in some cases, just increasing depth and diameter, the culverts are carried to the wash, which is going to take a lot, at least until a long-term solution.
Do you have some contact information?
I'd be happy to give it to you. Dan Taylor, 820-7993.
7993?
Yes.
Okay. As we move forward, it would be helpful to be able to come out and meet with you and your neighbors and look at... I was out there.
I know you came out.
Appreciate it. Several different places that evening. One thing that will be very helpful as we move forward is getting your neighbors on board as we look at potential solutions to this. Sometimes, like when you're talking about putting an oversized drainage through somebody's property, somebody's going to lose property to be able to put that drainage in. You just start having those conversations with our neighbors and saying, where is the best place to take those drainages, and is everybody in favor of that? If we can start having those conversations with your neighbors... If we can start having those conversations with your neighbors, when we get there, then we can start, we're that much with our head.
That'd be great. When Curtis gets some kind of plans, people will contact where it is, that would be great to talk to the specific people involved.
And it is a lot easier to have those conversations now, as recent as the incident was, rather than later on when people aren't maybe as concerned. So, getting all the neighbors on board so that when, like Casey mentioned, everybody gets out there, we'll be really far.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate that. Commissioners, item number seven, Steve Richardson called and he has asked to move his to the next meeting, so if he wants you to.
Sorry, we're actually going to put it on the November 2nd.
November 2nd meeting, so if we can move table that to the November 2nd meeting and meet that motion.
I'll second that.
Call it a favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, consideration and approval of emergency action plan for County Administration Building, Don Johnson.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Doc.
Have you guys all got a copy of that?
I do.
This is a proposed plan, it's been through several different people, it's been publicly reported. And so finally, we need to hear this particular building for flood wash.
Is this very different than what was in the address?
I don't, it's very similar. There will continually be some change to this plan as employees come and go. It will be updated in little ways like that. The basic plan, this will work for, it starts out with fire, it goes into earthquakes, it captures different types of instances. So it'll be useful in a lot of ways for the county.
I know you've put a lot of time and effort into it, I appreciate all the work you've done to get this here. The one question I had, Commissioners, is once we approve this, Dan, I'm assuming we can post up some of the routes and some of the information as far as evacuating the building if we had, had to have an emergency.
Yeah, the employees that are in this building would need to be very familiar with this. Everybody has a little bit of a role in it. The plan itself doesn't need to be posted on each floor, we'll put it in a common area next to the medical kits that are supplied. So there will be routes posted on the top two floors, I don't believe it needs to be one in the basement, we typically work that way.
Is there going to be any training for employees in this building as to what's in the plan and how to carry out the plan? I think if you have a plan, you should at least administer and help people understand it and go through it, maybe even yearly, just to throw it pressure.
Yeah, the way we'll present this, there should be, I believe it should be done in each safety meeting, each department, and then after that, I believe there should be a drill at least once a year to use this plan. I think when you're actually in a situation, you learn a lot about your plan and people learn a lot about how much they pay attention through the plan, so it's got to be great practice for everybody.
Commissioners, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve your plan, just skimming through this copy, looks very similar to what I saw those emailed to us. And also ask on that, let's go ahead and set up those trainings so that we have those ready to go for departments in this building. Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second? Call it a favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item number nine, review and possible approval of fiscal year 2017 Children's Justice Center grant amendment, Shelley Wright. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm great. So this is our amendment to the Children's Justice Center contract with the Attorney General's Office. It's just amending a new year with new funding, no other amendments to the contract, no changes to any of the business, it's just a dollar amount.
Talk to us about the dollar amount, because that's always important. Because most of your programs are coming out of the state funding and of course the county participates in employment and benefits and those kind of things in other ways, but these grants are so important to what we do with the Children's Justice Center, so.
We depend on them. So, the Children's Justice Center, a portion of our program will be proceeding $108,248 for the fiscal year 2017. Whatever funding is left over, we get rolled over for the next year. Unfortunately, fiscal year 16, we did not have any funding left over, we used every penny of it. So, this is just our amount that we're going to receive for fiscal year 17, flat amount. The Attorney General's Office, what they do is, they do a formula, and so all of the Children's Justice Centers receive a base amount, and then any additional funding will depend on the number of cases that we serve during the fiscal year. So, that's how our funding is allocated.
Thank you. Questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that motion, thank you.
We have a motion and a second and a further discussion. Call it a favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, if you want to.
Thank you.
You want to.
Yes.
Item number 10, review and possible approval of 2016 State Homeland Security Grant, Security Project Grant, Justin Neal.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is just the, so, the grant we've got eight years in her order, it's a regional grant between Carbon and Emery Counties. Regionally, between two counties, we'd get $225,494. Of that coming to us would be $108,309.50 would be our portion. Emery County gets a little more this year because last year we updated our CO grad system, which is $21,000 and it's, they turned out great there, so that's, they get a little bit more money this year for that reason.
Any other questions? Talk to us about any county matches, anything else that we need to know to participate with this. It looks very similar to, like you said, the previous years, but.
Yeah, no county match, it's 100% from the federal government, run through the state EDM and then they fund it out to us, so, no matches. 25% of it does have to be spent on law enforcement, so between training and actual supplies, so, but other than that, it's broke up into some of the systems we use, we pay for cellphones, internet, command posts, along with the hazmat, personal protective equipment, those kind of things.
I appreciate you describing that for the record, because so many times, you know, where do these monies come from and what do we really use them for? It's good to have that discussion here in this public venue. And also know that, yes, there are some grants that have matches in them, but there are a lot of this type of grant that really are just those federal pass-throughs. So the next question goes with that, and it's always an unknown, but are we for sure going to get these monies this year with the federal budget?
Yeah, so the states already got that money in there.
So this is budget right now.
And they received it, we had a budget meeting a month and a half ago where we reallocated all that money as a URCC committee, a Utah Regional Coordination Committee, and so those have all been designated, this is kind of a formality that they've all agreed that every county that it got based on what they got last year, so.
It's good to know.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to be approved, the 26th State Homeland Security Grant project.
I'll second that. A motion and a second and a further discussion. Call it a favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's Justin Neal who's hanging these, will you kind of give an update on where we're at with the FEMA declaration, or not declaration, the ESRs and.
So. So for those of you who are here, if you don't know me, I'm Justin Neal, I'm the County Emergency Manager. We are working with the NRCS, we talked a little bit about the emergency watershed protection money. We're working with Tony Bills at the NRCS to damage survey reports, they come out from the NRCS and do some damage surveys to say what's been damaged, those areas where we know the canal breaches, we can say this is a real problem caused by the flooding and make it help pay for that. So as of right now, I'm drafting up the initial letter of saying we're interested in that money and once we get that back to them, hopefully tomorrow, we will be able to get them down here and review all those places that need to be addressed, like Wellington, Eastern, East Carbon, Wellington, Robertson Lane, Helper, Springland and Westwood, all those areas, we know there's damage that needs to be fixed. So, once that happens, they'll come down, give us what they think it would cost, and then we can apply for those monies based on those damage survey reports.
Would you also then talk about, like Commissioner Hope's asked, the FEMA monies and that process that we're in with the state?
Yeah, so.
That's a whole different story.
Yeah, that's a whole nother story. Unfortunately, we've been gathering all those documentation for businesses and everything else. As the countywide, right now, we are pretty close to $1.2 million worth of damages. For the FEMA monies, for us to declare emergency, we're supposed to be over $76,000, which we're well above. At the statewide level, they have to be at $3.8 million, and from what I've been told, the state level is statewide, we're not anywhere close to that, we have the most damage. Some of the other counties like Duchene, they're only reporting $100,000 worth of damage, so we're quite a ways away from getting any presidential or statewide declaration to get any of that money. For the Small Business Association Loan Program, I forget offhand what the numbers are, but I know we're just short of the number of businesses that were damaged, along with the ultimate number we need to be at for damage amount. We were trying to work with one landowner to get some of his stuff reported and we never could, so we fell short on trying to get that and we had to tell the state today we weren't going to make it, and it's very unfortunate, we were really hoping that we'd have that opportunity to provide that to citizens and unfortunately, we were just short on that dollar amount.
Public infrastructure.
So, public infrastructure, between roads, culverts, those kinds of damages, the last time I looked at it, we were just over $650,000 worth of damage to our critical infrastructure, so that's county roads, culverts, those kind of things that Curtis Page had branched through and come up with those damages. Thank you.
Was it the top one or the bottom one on this one? Did it say here or?
Yeah, so, printed here and then it's on this one, so.
Printed here?
Yeah.
Sorry, must have turned it off. Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
I'll get your copy, please.
Item number 11, presentation made by Carbon County Economic Development Beautification Committee. Welcome.
Commissioners, thank you for giving us this opportunity this evening to be able to present something that we feel is really true and dear to our hearts, and that is looking for opportunities to increase the economic development here in the community. And we represent a subset of that committee focused on community enhancement and beautification. My name is Mark Holyoke and I'm CEO of Cassview Hospital, but here tonight, I come representing, being the chair of this beautification enhancement committee. We are here to gather some support for the projects throughout the county and most importantly, to look at ways in which we can beautify the area to enhance future businesses to really take a second look at us. Not just the first look, turn away, but truly take a second look and hopefully relocate here and help with some of the economic enhancements. I know this is a time when we really wonder, you know, where's the future going, and I think the most, more that we can diversify and bring additional companies into the area, the better off all of the way. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is ask Kathy Walton, who is a member of our committee and also a very active citizen of the community, to share some of her thoughts and her vision.
Thank you, I've lived here for off and on 15 years and I moved back six years ago and as I travel around, I look at other communities and think, you know, this is a beautiful place, how can we do this in Price? And since I moved back, ideas have formed over the past six years of what we could do to make your first impression coming through Price a positive impression. When people pull off the freeway, that they look and say, this is a great town, people take price here in their community and they, you know, it just a smile on the face of Price when you pull into town. So we've talked about landscaping the exit coming in to town from the hospital, that hospital exit, landscaping that. Also thought of, as you turn the corner, to go into town, maybe putting lampposts up and over the overpass all the way to Third East. Also, it could be flower pots that could be maintained during the summer and early spring. But all in all, we want our first impression of Price to be a positive one to people. We have so many people coming into town that are tourists, travelers just from here to there or to Moab, and you know, it'd just be great to have something that just puts a good smile on the face of Price. Also, it would be a welcome to Price sign, home of USU Eastern, something to that line, but also some fences would be great over Price River and all the way up to Overpass, maybe a black rhino fence, something that's beautiful, not necessarily cement and chain fence, but something that would maybe prompt people to drive over the overpass and see what's in Price, rather than pull into a gas station and pull out. But anyway, those are some ideas that we've had and it would be lovely to look at those.
So, not all of the members of our committee could attend tonight, but I'm going to ask those that are here representing our committee if they would go ahead and stand and be recognized. So we also have individuals on our committee that represent UDOT, county, city, Nelson Construction, ELCO, USU Eastern and others that just want to make a difference in the community, volunteering their time. When we look at that exit there, First North that Ms. Walton talked about, that's where most of those that are considering locating to our community come from, from the north. And I've learned since I've been here for six years, it's up north, over the mountains, so they come over the mountain or from up north, and that First North exit usually exit there and come into our community. And one of the focuses that we've talked about is really, is if we look at economic development moving forward, our partnership in enhancing the college, the USU Eastern, is going to be huge. And so we've had some editorials of individuals that come, parents bringing their kids to check out the campus, they take that First North exit, they drive down the First North, turn up towards the college, and some of those editorials are, wow, we just turned around right then and went back. So it's, and don't mean to be critical, but it's just not inviting, and so that's why we've really taken that First North exit. If we look at the on-ramps and the off-ramps, they're large, very large. And so what we've done is really taken some information from an engineering group here locally that has volunteered their efforts and let us know what they would recommend as far as enhancements. We've also discussed this with some of the local landscapers and taking a portion of those on-ramps and off-ramps, they're at 100 North, we'd like to take all four quadrants and to enhance those. The traffic volume numbers from UDOT show that the interchange of Highway 6 and 100 North and Price has an annual traffic volume of more than 4 million unique trips. Most of those trips, many of those are made from visitors to the county and offer a great opportunity to make that first impression. In addition, there's never been a more important time for economic development than right now, for us to look at what we can do to create economic diversification, to be a vital lifeblood for our community. And so with that in mind, our committee has endeavored to make enhancements for that intersection first, and then we'd like to move on down towards First North, towards the college. the college, um, to give that beautification down through that corridor. So, we're here today to ask for your support in this endeavor, um, in two different ways. Number one, first, we requested approval and, um, support from the county, because this truly is, um, within the, um, county, um, the county proper. And so, we're also asking, um, approval from, um, UDOT to move forward. So, having someone on our committee that represents UDOT, we've made some great strides there. UDOT does not fund these, so that comes with the second part. Um, UDOT is, from what we've heard so far, is very good to work with, and they'll support us, but not financially. So, the financial component will truly need to come from local efforts. And so, the second part of our request this evening is asking, um, pledging support, um, from the county for the 2017 budget. Uh, we realize that we're late into the year, this year, we'd like to get going on this project as soon as possible, but we do need to raise some funds. We're looking at grant monies, uh, looking at some support from the county and the city, as well as, um, private enterprises here in the area. And so, the, the estimate of this project, to do it right, is right around $450,000. So, I realize that does sound like a high price tag, but studies have shown that the things that enhance, um, their on and off ramps, invite people in, that usually the result there is 10, 15-fold of what they'll get back out of it. And so, we are asking for the county to consider, um, budgeting for, um, 50%, and that would be $225,000, um, to be budgeted as a one-time expense in 2017. We have also received some in-kind pledges from Nelson, from NELCO, um, from the college, um, looking at some manpower there that will come into play here as well. If I put my hospital, um, CEO hat on again, um, with hospital, I've pledged $10,000 towards the project, because I feel that it's just critical, um, for the future of, um, Carbon County. So, um, realize that, again, it's a difficult time to act, the budgets are tight, um, but truly feel that we need to spend money to be able to bring money into the community. And so, at this time, I'd ask if the commissioners, if they would permit others from our, um, committee to add anything that I may have missed, if that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kathy Hannah Smith, and you're probably saying, where's Price City at on this? And of course, you have that right. Uh, we're still in preliminary stages about months. When we presented to Price City two weeks ago, we didn't have an amount in front of us. So, we do plan to go back to them and talk to them about a dollar figure. Right now, we have written a letter of support for the project, for the committee, and also for UDOT. Uh, and UDOT has given us a template of an agreement that they have done in other cities for us to look at, which is traditional. Mark mentioned that there's no money committed, however, Darryl Ryan, you all know him, um, he wrote us a little note and said, maybe some participation if they saw a local leverage. And Darryl was wanting to check on that and see if there's anything that could come about from that. But, uh, it is a huge undertaking, it's something we've all talked about for years and years and years, and never been able to pull it off. I believe this is the first time we've really got our feet under us and some momentum going. It's a big project, but I think it'll give us a return on our investment. As Mark mentioned, those two, um, construction companies, it's been really fun to watch them both sit at the same table, and even though they're competitive in nature, they understand the returns on the investment also. And, uh, so I think they're willing to do some things too. Um, uh, they'll have to be paid, surely, for our costs, but it's pretty impressive to see how we've all come together. And my thinking, while Mark was presenting, is that we really are in this together, and we're better together than we are apart. Not one of us can do this separately. So, don't think that we, as Price City, are looking just at the county for all the help, because Price City's going to have to step up, step up to the plate too. USU, um, I'm pretty sure they're going to step up to the plate, as Kathy mentioned. Signage would be, uh, welcome to Price City, home of USU Eastern. That got me excited about it. I think we'd have had an opportunity to talk more to them last Thursday. Uh, Mark was going to present at a meeting at Price City, and USU does a quarterly meeting together, but they probably ran out, so obviously, we didn't make that meeting, but we plan to revisit that at the end of this month, and Mark, hopefully, will make that presentation at that time. So, we see a lot of players involved, dollar amount to this point, we don't yet know yet. But again, we're certainly in this together, and I think we all have, uh, an opportunity to give a return on the investment.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
One other question that I have, Mark, is that it'd be very helpful for, is I'm looking on this budget year, well, next year's budget, um, if we've got any preliminary things like from the engineering, and, you know, kind of where those costs fall, because there are obviously resources and things that could be part of that process, instead of just the hard dollar, that, you know, that's going to have to be part of it, obviously. But, um, those would be very helpful right now as we're going through that. So, I know that you're, you're a great, uh, you know, subcommittee working in that economic development, side of it with Tanny, so thank you for your time and energy into this. But, any information you've got, uh, we'd certainly like, I'd certainly like to see us, you know, make this happen. Uh, nearly six years ago, at the first UDOT meeting I attended, I asked that question of, how do we qualify? How do we get this? I got that same answer, we don't do this, communities do it if they really want it. So, I don't think there, doesn't sound to me like their tunes changed at all.
No, we'll, we'll still try to give whatever we can out of UDOT, absolutely. And so, we do have a, an estimate that's broken down and shows some of those components. And so, we'll get that to all three of you, as well as an artist rendition, uh, that DeMille Engineering did for us. And so, it shows, you know, some large boulders, um, some trees, a few shelves, but mainly it's natural landscape, rocks, and things that will be low maintenance. But, where you want to tell me?
That'd be great.
That'd be great. I think there, in some ways, there are things that the county could provide, like the gravel, some boulders. We have some county pits, so that would lower the cost for making contractors, um, having to use materials that they produce, um, if it's county materials, so...
Perhaps there's other partners that we could approach, such as the Extension Office and a few other entities that might be able to help us with some of that landscaping.
Okay, that's perfect. So, we'll get that information to you quickly. And then, just so you know, as far as the committee, we're going to be approaching local businesses in that general area and ask them, um, for their pledges as well towards the project.
I remember when the city did that landscaping that, that she could get to the overpass, kind of on both sides of, uh, the line of the intersection like there, I mean, that was, that was major work to get that area to look like it is. So, it just, you can see what it could be because of what they've done there.
Well, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Item number 12, proposal to increase property tax revenue and possible approval of resolution necessary to increase property tax revenue. Seth Olvison, Clerk Auger.
May. Commissioners, as we, the email that I, I sent to you, we've been working on the 2017 budget. Um, these items on the agenda, um, just for those that are here, this is the kickoff for the, what's known as the truth in taxation process, or the process that a governmental entity goes through to increase one of its, one or more of its county, of the levies that affect everyone's property taxes. Read into the agenda tonight is, um, proposal that Carbon County to increase property taxes. Um, the, there it says 12A, proposed property tax increase amounts are $450,000 for the general fund, which will be generated from the general fund levy, and $12,000 to the municipal services fund, which only affects, um, homes and, and landowners in unincorporated parts of the county. Um, the purpose of those, the proposed purpose of the property tax increase is to provide existing services in the face of decreasing revenues within the county. There are several other counties, mostly counties, that are heavily affected by mineral production, um, that have, in the last year, have seen 70% increases in different levies. This levy, this is the increase, we've gone through a lot of work to try to, um, be cognizant of, of the situation of the different property owners, but also knowing that you can't defer maintenance on roads, culverts, things like that that keep coming up. And the funding that is available to the county to provide those services has decreased, along with mineral production over the last several years. The proposed property tax increase percentage amount is approximately 9.29%. 9% for homeowners within incorporated areas, that's the amount that affects the general, the general fund, which would be all parcels. And I want to explain that a little bit. That, when I say 9%, it's not my total property tax bill will increase by 9%. Only the tax levy that is associated with the Carbon County General Fund, or the Carbon County Municipal Services Fund. So, when, when a taxpayer receives their tax notice, um, it'll say all of the different levies that apply to their home. 60% approximately of the tax in the county goes to the school district. So, if you took your entire tax bill and you, you paid a thousand dollars a year in tax, 600 of that, $600 of that is going to the school district. That's not changing. This doesn't change that. Just the amount that goes to Carbon County. Look before somebody says, it's going to go up 10%. It's not, it's not that big of an amount. This is the first step, so we've announced it, it's on the agenda. Um, this is not a public hearing. In, on October 17th, along with the tax notices, we will be mailing out parcel-specific mailers in with all of the tax notices. So, when you get that, there will be another sheet of paper, and it will say, this is the levy as it is this year, this is what Carbon County's proposing that levy to be, and the change in your tax will be that. So, you can be able to look at that on each parcel that you own and say, this is what the increase will be. For, uh, $100,000 worth of taxable value, the estimated or approximate change will be $26 for those living within incorporated areas within the cities, and about $28 or $29 for those living in unincorporated areas. Um, so, if, if you have a $300,000 home, it'll be a little bit more. If you have a $100,000 home, it'll be less, but that is a way for people to gauge, but you'll receive an individual mailer, so you can tell exactly what that proposed change will be. After that process happens, um, and everyone knows how their parcels will be affected, the county will hold a public hearing, it'll be advertised for a couple of weeks. Um, but this is the kickoff for that, so, um, these items on the agenda are not meant for public comment tonight, because the public hasn't been afforded exactly how it affects them. But, it is on the agenda so that everyone can know. If people have questions or concerns about how it may affect them, they're welcome to call my, my office, and I can explain it to them, or, or any of the county officials that, that know. But, that is, that's the process in a nutshell. You know, you know my, my position on, on the tax increase. I, we've worked for, for years, from when I came into office, trying to, trying to take care of things and be responsible stewards, and it, it's very difficult to maintain the level of service that everyone's accustomed to without any type of new tax revenue. The tax rate is not adjusted for inflation every year. So, when a taxing entity receives an amount, they receive the same amount, and there's no inflationary adjustment. If there was, we may not be having to, to go through the process, but that's how the code's written, so that everyone can be informed of how it'll happen and, and the effect on each parcel. So, um, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I don't, I, I know that it's going to be important as we put some dates out there on those next steps. Um, you indicated that the notices that'll go out with this year's tax notice, and again, this is for the year 2017 increase. But, as far as our public hearing, have we looked at those dates?
Yes, the, the public hearing will be in December, the second commission meeting in December, which I believe is the 21st. Um, because of the advertising requirements on that, we have to advertise it well beforehand. So, um, that gives everyone the opportunity to receive their mailers, come in, pay their taxes, ask questions that they have, receive notice, and for those people that live out of town, that, you know, people that live in Salt Lake or Wyoming, whatever, that own land here, they have an adequate time to investigate and see how it'll affect them, so...
Seth, as, as more and more projects are brought to us from the community, um, let's just assume for a moment, the process has been begun at 9.29%. Is there any way that that would actually end up being higher as the process furthers, or is that the limit that we're setting today?
That's the limit that we're setting today. That's the, the max amount that the, that the commission be allowed to adopt, along with the 2017 budget. Um, so, this would be a worst-case scenario. If, if something amazing happened, or a couple of coal mines opened, and we, we received more mineral money coming back in, um, the commissioners in December could always opt to take anything up to that amount, but nothing over. So, this is a...
You know, we've, we've made some statements in the past concerning the, the budgeting process that we've gone through, well, that I've gone through over the last four or five years. And in that process, we have, uh, had to cut basically $5 million out of our annual budgets. And we've done that successfully without layoffs and minimizing any services. And so, it's, it's time, you know, that we have to look at this, how long can we go without those kind of changes? It's also, uh, critical, and Commissioner Hope could maybe share more on that, but where our mineral revenues have gone with the service, uh, and transportation district, or wrecking transportation district. But, what we have received, uh, for, in the form of basically county contract on projects, has decreased significantly over the last, uh, 40 years also. So, those are things that bring us to this point, and we do look forward to those conversations that we need to have. Our budget covers the entire county, uh, whether you live in, in the cities, in the incorporated areas or not. And so, we would like to be able to maintain those services without, you know, taking away somebody's favorite, uh, favorite opportunity that does exist in the county. So, I don't know if you want to add any dollar amount at this point in time, but I know you have those members.
Um, just, just kind of to tell you, from what Jay was saying about increasing our operating budgets, this was a, a graph that was created by Seth's office. In 2011, um, the county was, was at its all-time high of just under, um, $25 million in operating budgets. In 2012, um, it was 20, 23 million. 2013 was 21 million. 2014 was 20 million. In 2015, it was 18 million. So, we've decreased the operating expenses of the county every year, in, in hopes to, to, uh, try and not increase property taxes. However, the mineral monies, as was stated before, have continued to decrease from, from around 10 million in, it was in 2011, to, we're estimating around $3.5 million this year, and potentially decreasing in future years, unless something happens to drive the, the cost of, uh, natural gas and oil up, and, and also some opening and some more favorable look upon our coal and our coal mines and our industry here.
Um, the one other thing that I'd like to add on that is that the general taxation rate into our general fund is about $5 million. And so, it has stayed, if, if you look at anything that the county's done over a number of years, that is the amount that we actually collect from the property tax, um, as far as the general county, general fund goes. Those other funds are coming from, you know, the federal monies and the state monies that we receive, and, and that's, uh, those are all, you know, broken down out of different sources. But, what we're talking about with Seth is presenting tonight is just our general fund, being our general property tax.
The other, I think the other thing that is important to understand and know is that when we were looking at budgets, it was proposed to us that the increase would be around 27%.
Correct.
We opted not to take the 27% in hopes that we could decrease the hit to everybody, maybe spread it out over a few years instead of a one-time thing, maybe even not do more than just a one-time thing, but in hopes that, uh, if we do a little bit this year and not hit everybody so hard, maybe it won't have to happen again. And if it does, it'll spread it out and allow budgets... And if it does, it'll spread it out and allow budgets to not be hit as hard in one year. That was some counsel given to us, well, by the sheriff and a few different people. So hopefully that helps with the understanding of why and why the numbers. And, and just for me, I think it's important that we do it on a year when I'm actually running for office, not the year after, because I'd rather you look at it and, and see that I'm putting it out there on a year that I'm running for office, not a year that, right after I got re-elected. So those are, those are reasons why we, we propose this for this year. Any further comments?
No. There's gonna be several opportunities going forward with the public hearing and everything else, and truth in taxation process for, for more comments. This is just beginning the process.
So please, if you have comments or concerns, you don't have to wait until that meeting. Please come and talk with Seth or all of us myself. I won't offer up the other commissioners, but we're more than welcome to talk about budgets. It's all open. We'll show you everything that we have, and we'll help you to try and understand from where we're coming, and also try and understand from where you're coming from as well. So please, don't wait until the very last day until the public hearing. You're more than welcome to kind of speak in public hearing, but we're also available prior to that. So we need a resolution?
Nope.
Or you just need a motion for tonight?
A motion for a resolution.
I don't know that you need a motion for a resolution. I just think a motion to approve going forward with the truth in taxation process is probably sufficient.
The resolution will come in December if it's adopted along with the county budget.
I had initially thought we'd need resolutions right off the bat, but we don't need them yet, so. Well, Commissioner, if we have any, if you want to go forward with that?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we proceed with the proposal, the truth in taxation process, so we can further our discussions and decide what we do by, yeah, final budget date later this year.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As much as I'd like to say nay.
Item number 13. Consideration of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Forest Service as cooperating agency for matricial forest and plan revision process.
Commissioner, maybe I can speak to that just a bit. As you know, the Forest Service is revising its forest plan. They want everybody, every entity that's willing to give input or be involved in that process to sign an MOU on some level, and they've agreed to have the county act as a cooperator, which means they'll look to us as a source for documents, primary information about our views on the forest, our, our use of the forest. So they've agreed to share documents with us. They've agreed to share drafts of their forest plan for our review, to notify us of meetings, to communicate with us with respect to their goals. So this agreement simply indicates that we'll act in good faith together to share as much information and goals and our, our documents and our planning process together. And they, and it's especially helpful because it says they'll agree to take into account what we've proposed to them as, as a county entity that has property in the forest, where the forest is within our entity. They, they're going to cooperate with us in this process. So Rex and I have reviewed this. We think it's fine for you to sign and ask that you would approve it tonight.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we, yeah, well, the master's comments, sorry. Through the review and through Christian's counsel and Rex as well, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this memorandum of understanding with the Forest Service.
I'll second that. Do we have any further discussion?
Commissioners, just to note that I think they're gonna, we've asked them to send us a draft that has you as the commissioners to sign it. It does have Rex, that goes the public lands director. We're gonna see if they won't send us one that has the commission as the signing party on this. So I don't think you need to sign this draft tonight. You'll be getting a new one, and that'll be the sole change to it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I just want to say one more thing about this. As, as this process of the forest revision goes about, and, and for those that are here and for those that may be watching on YouTube or watch on ETV10 later, this is a very important process. This will dictate what we can do on our mountains from here for the next 10 years. All of our recreational opportunities, our mineral extraction opportunities, it will dictate everything that can be done on those, on those mountains. So please, be part of the process. Contact the Forest Service, make comments of your own. They have to consider every comment that is made, which really makes it hard on them because everybody that comments, it just lengthens the process and makes it a little harder for them. But that's not why to do it. But, but make sure your voice is heard, that your, your likes are taken care of in this process. If you like to ride four-wheelers, horses, hunt, camp, all of those things will be considered in this process. So please, be part of the process.
Well, it's important because if we're locally not part of the process, we know that people from out of town are giving their input, but it's going to affect us and them. So that's why it's so important that us locally, that we send our comments.
Thank you. Item number 14. Review and possible approval of proposed board of equalization adjustments. Seth Obison.
Hey, commissioners, in your packet there's a, I fingerprinted it. They, the Board of Equalization met end of August, met with different property owners who had the chance to appeal. It's part of the, the process, the property tax process. Disclosure notices are sent out in July. Property owners have until September 15th to appeal those properties. The county hires a hearing officer to review them in conjunction with the assessor and, and the information that's provided by the taxpayer, and he makes a recommendation for an adjustment. The sheets in your packet are the recommended adjustments from the hearing officer. There are several 11 parcels that are in gray. Those are, are appeals that were received in time for the deadline but have not been fully reviewed, and we don't have a, a recommendation back yet. Trying to get the process moving along so we can get the notices out along with the truth in taxation process that we discussed in the earlier item. But those adjustments are the recommendations to the Board of Equalization, which is the county commission, and we would ask that you approve those adjustments, knowing that those parcels that are marked, that are gray will have to come before the commission again on a future agenda item for when we get those changes or the suggested changes. Also, there's, there were two parcels that we made. We're requesting adjustments made to the tax as a commission adjustment. One is a, an error, in a surveying error in where the parcel laid, and that tax was erroneous, and the commission needs to adjust that. And also, one that was sold in tax, so what shows is an amount of tax due, which since it's been strictly the county, that tax needs to be adjusted out by the, by the treasurer. So we'd ask for a motion to approve those adjustments to the tax roll.
I think it's significant, again, for the record, that the pre-board of equalization amount was $43,334,079. The post-board of equalization amount was $39,586,722. So a decrease of significant dollars as far as valuation goes within the county, which again affects, you know, our tax and the amounts that we collect. So I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve, having been through that process.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 15. Change or cancellation of November 16th, 2016 meeting.
US Conference. So that, that happens during the same time as our annual Utah Association of Counties Conference?
It starts then.
It starts on Wednesday.
So because of the date conflict, I would recommend that we just cancel that meeting rather than holding a special meeting on a different day.
Are there any other things as far as the taxation process that we've gone through that we won't need to hold a meeting on that week?
No.
We're good to?
We'll be fine for that. I, I don't particularly like the idea of canceling a meeting entirely because things pile up. The next meeting will be very, very large, but it can be done. The other thing we could do is we could ask to, to hold that meeting the day before on Tuesday instead of the thing. But I don't know if, if, if any of the county officials have leadership positions in UAC that have meetings that are earlier before the conference actually starts. I don't know. I don't, but...
I don't. But I don't, I don't either. But one other option then would be to move that to the 14th of November.
Monday, is that it?
That's, that's Monday. That's a little tight for notification and advertising, but we could certainly, you know, push those dates back.
It still meets with the GAFs.
Yeah, it does. It'll close off on Friday. But I, I would say, you know, that that's another option. That would allow people to travel down the day before, those that normally travel down earlier in the morning. I'd go ahead and make a motion that we move that meeting to Monday, November 14th at 4:30. Do you have a motion?
I'm just double checking. Doug, go ahead and second that motion. Same time, 4:30?
4:30 on 14th.
We'll still be recovering from the general election, but we'll be there.
I think the, is, when's the 11th? That's a holiday. Is that the week we, is it the Friday?
That's Friday.
Friday.
Correct.
But is it a Friday?
It's a Friday.
It's Friday. So we'll close everything up on the Thursday.
So we'll have to close it on the 10th, which should be the Thursday. Okay. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion good, Jer? We are in here.